The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day, we thank you for our town, we thank you for this court, we thank you for every person that is representing this town in this meeting tonight. And we thank you for our police department. Father, we thank you for Brenda and her recovery, speedy recovery, in Jesus' name. We ask that you give her peace and comfort in her body and that she will recover quickly, in Jesus' name. And Father, we thank you that we do everything tonight decently in order that we make you proud and make the people happy in which we represent, in Jesus' name, amen.
One thing I want to say, just on what you were saying just add to, everybody pray for Drew's little kid. His grandmother died yesterday morning. Mrs. Flossie Rose passed away every morning during COVID.
All right, before we start this meeting, somebody uh looked at camera in here when people was having a meeting here and they wouldn't authorize, and I want to know who done that.
I did.
Okay, correct point. Why'd you do that?
I did it. I'm not taking any credit about it, but I'm not supposed to tell them.
Oh, you don't have the authority to do that.
Well, I did.
Well, you shouldn't have.
I did.
I'll tell you right now. Terry?
Okay. I talked with the DA when I was notified about the camera being unplugged, that she was taking pictures of it being unplugged. And he said, I talked with the DA and he said it can be a criminal offense to tamper with a camera. Now, I was notified by a certain party here that they didn't want to be recorded. And I told them to call the controller office to talk to me, and all I was going to do is advise them to go to a room where it's not a camera.
Right.
You know, that's all I was going to say.
Right.
Because that way it took it off of me, because I can't authorize anything on these cameras. They're, they put up for a reason, y'all put them up, I didn't. All of y'all put the cameras in.
We put, we put them up, yes, but let me, let me state this with the DA sitting here. A request was made, and I didn't know, I walked in and there was an investigator from the controller's office here. She asked that the camera be turned off. And the request had been placed to Terry, and he didn't do it. I told her, I said, "Don't worry about that, I'll take care of it." I come in here and I'm looking. She didn't want anything to be recorded while she was doing her investigation. Now, right or wrong, that's the controller's office, they made the request, so I'm looking. If I'm wrong, I'm wrong, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Here's the deal.
But when they made the request, uh, it.
She said it was a letter to him.
Let me think, let me think.
You did not have the power to do that.
Well, I did. Let me think about how it took place. W C. called me about it, because the controller had talked to him. And I told W C., I said, "Well, let me see where I'm at, because I don't think I messed with the cameras. But if you would cover, call me and talk to me and do that request." That's what I was going to do, I'm going to say, "Well, lady, you need to go in another office where there's no camera, because that camera stays running at all times." That's all I was going to tell her.
Right.
So the next thing I know, the camera's unplugged. I've got the picture on my phone with it unplugged. And then I wanted to know who unplugged it, so I pulled it up and it shows who unplugged it. And that's all I went to.
Hey, sir, I passed that information on.
You did?
And I left it in my.
Okay, that's fine. But I'm just saying, that's what I did. And I wanted to know who unplugged the camera. That should be, it's in my office, I ought to be.
It's just a chain of command, everybody just needs to call.
And I pulled it up and it showed the person, just the name of it. So, I mean, that's all I did, and I reported it to the DA. And the DA advised me that it could be a criminal charge.
Keep remembering, it's my understanding that there was going to be a meeting here that some people maybe didn't want others to know about.
Yeah.
And that was the reason that it was unplugged. And that is the reason it was unplugged, that interference of government operations in that as they found.
It's what it was, it's investigating me, that's part of it. But they sure went somewhere else. I mean, it's not, uh, I didn't know it's an offense or whatever, but Terry has to have surveillance here all the time. That's what it's for.
Just the camera being unhooked would not necessarily be.
Okay.
An offense.
Right.
If it was unhooked because there was going to be a meeting taking place and it was to keep it from being recorded, then it is a criminal offense.
Well, you certainly mean. Investigate from the controller.
They were doing interviews.
Did it not be taped and recorded, because she started up here in this room.
I don't know what kind of meeting it was, it was a meeting that was open to the public.
It was, it was no meeting of any kind.
Right.
Do you want her number so you can verify that?
No, I know.
Okay, I was just about to offer.
I was asked, I was asked the question. I said, "If there was a meeting taking place," which was a meeting between y'all, whether it was two of you or not, or more, if it could not be.
It was not a meeting, it was, of course, she was interviewing witnesses.
Okay. That's a different situation. So, but I would still have advised if she just called up on the room.
Okay, that's uh.
And I, and I'll say this step while here. I do not want to get in the middle of your business. I have tried to stay out of the issues that have been going on down here. I have had numerous calls asking me to get in the middle of it. There have been things that have happened that ouster petitions could be filed. I think that's, unless it just gets out of hand, I think that we should leave that to the voters to decide who they want to represent them. So I've tried to stay out of that. I'm going to try to stay out of that, but I keep getting requests to get in the middle of it, and I don't want to. So, I just ask that everybody try to conduct the business to what's proper, what it's supposed to be, so that I don't have to be a part of it, because I don't want to be a part of anything.
Okay, are you saying that I can disconnect these cameras anytime I get ready?
No, it shouldn't be disconnected.
Well, they should be buzzed disconnected, and it's my cameras that goes in my office. I do not want to see what goes on in here, that's not what my cameras are for.
There is a statute that says if something is done to conceal government business or to try to destroy what would be a copy or a video of government business, then that's a felony. So if a person is unhooking it to conceal a meeting or something like that, then it's, it is.
If that lady had a request to that to me, which I asked this, this orderman to do, I would have come down here and I would have took it, if that was the case, but she never called me, and I didn't understand why she didn't call me. And she never did call me. I don't understand that. It's just like, and that was just like a slap in my face when they disconnected that camera and left it to things like that where people could see it. And he stayed like that till this morning, till he come down here and fixed it back.
Yeah.
It was fixed back this morning, because I was here.
Don't think I was here this morning. It gives the appearance that there's somebody trying to.
I'm talking about him last morning, put the camera back. Anyway, it should not, any of this equipment be messed with.
Right, and that's what I was saying, you were talking about, but it gives the appearance that somebody is trying to conceal something.
And all I was saying, if they need to go in a room with no camera, if they want to not be recorded, because that camera records all the time.
Right.
And it should never be messed with again.
Okay, uh, first thing I want to, before we get into the budget, we got this percent on the water, and we checked back, and in twenty-three, the two percent was already entered in, so we only owe two percent this year. So we backed up and we can see where it already been put in, and we was asking for four percent, and we reduced that down to two, because last year, in July of twenty-three, it was already entered in the two percent. So we only got two percent on the water to be put in now. And I have the paperwork here to show that.
I have the paperwork as well, and it was only raised two percent based on this ordinance.
Two percent's already been paid last year.
Yes, sorry.
Okay, alright.
With, with, uh, no, I'm saying, I have the same paperwork. This is last year's ordinance, the rate was seventeen sixteen. If you take two percent of seventeen sixteen, that's thirty-four cents, that's some change. So the new rate would be seventeen fifty-one, which is what the rates have reflected on this paper, it was done correctly.
Okay, good.
I understand. Everybody's got corrected.
Okay, that's uh, I guess we want to take care of the budget.
Um, the only thing that I have is the ordinance for the amendments that need to be made to the budget. I think I gave everybody a copy of it, but here it is. About one of you are supposed to read it.
Okay, you got the, the legal services ten thousand?
You have to read it from the top of the page, the whole, two pages has to be read.
If you don't care, you want to read it?
Yes, sir.
If you would, please?
Whereas the city originally adopted the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget by passage of ordinance number, and it is ordinance number six, semi-twenty, on June twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, I believe, that is the ordinance number from last year, but I will double check that before this is entered into the record. Whereas pursuant to the Tennessee State Constitution, section twenty-four of article two, no public money shall be expended except pursuant to appropriations made by law, and whereas pursuant to the municipal budget law of nineteen eighty-two, as found in the Tennessee code annotated, section six dash fifty-six dash two oh nine, the Board of Alderman has the authority to authorize the budget officer to transfer monies from one appropriation to another within the same fund, and now therefore be it ordained by the Board of Mayor and Alderman of the City of originally Tennessee that changes be made to the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget as follows. Section one, ordinance number six, semicolon twenty-one, is hereby amended by increasing legal services by ten thousand dollars, code one-ten dash four-one-five-oh-oh dash two-five-two, health insurance by one thousand dollars, code one-ten dash four-five-one-five-oh-oh dash two-six-two, dog pound expenses by fifteen hundred dollars, code one-ten dash four-one-five-oh-oh dash two-nine-nine, and civic center expenses by forty-five hundred dollars, code one-ten dash four-one-five-oh-oh dash nine-two-nine. By decreasing the police department salary, this is for the current year, because you had a large overage, a seventeen thousand dollars, which is code one-ten dash four-two-one-oh-oh dash one-one-one.
Money left over, I didn't have no.
In overage, and there was a large surplus in that, in the salary.
In money for, and you're cutting my budget?
No, sorry, this has nothing to do with your new budget, this is just money is reappropriated. This ordinance is further amended by increasing solid waste insurance expense five thousand dollars, one-three-one dash four-three-two-zero-zero dash five-one-zero, salaries by twenty thousand dollars, one-three-one dash four-three-two-zero-zero dash one-one-one, and decreasing the fund balance by twenty-five thousand dollars. This ordinance is further amended by increasing state street aid utility services by two thousand dollars, code one-ten dash four-three-one-nine-zero dash two-four-oh, and decreasing highways and streets operating supplies by two thousand dollars, one-ten dash four-three-one-zero-zero dash three-two-oh. This order is further amended, increasing water and sewer department salaries by sixty-one thousand five hundred eleven dollars, code four-one-three dash five-two-one-zero-zero dash one-one-one, repairs and maintenance by fourteen thousand six hundred seventy-four dollars, code four-one-three dash four-two-one-zero-zero dash two-six-oh, and operating supplies by fourteen thousand four hundred ninety-six dollars, code four-one-three dash five-two-one-oh-oh dash three-one-oh, and decreasing the fund balance by ninety thousand six hundred and eighty-one dollars. Section two, the Board of Mayor and Alderman authorizes the city recorder to make the said changes in the accounting system. Section three, this ordinance shall take effect immediately upon final passage.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
I thought we were, um, I was waiting till we got over to the water, but I thought we were going to increase the legal ten on each.
That is on the new budget, this is just the amendments that happen, that we made to the current budget.
Okay, alright.
Motion to adopt.
Roll call.
Nancy?
Yes.
Yes, you can.
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
The last question.
Good question.
Beth, how much money do you have in fund balance?
For which account?
How much?
For which account? General water or beach?
Both.
Both of them.
Okay, an unappropriated fund balance in. I may not have that with me. Okay. Fund balance, I don't believe this is in parentheses, I'm not sure, I didn't create this paperwork. It was created by someone else.
So you don't know?
It's not on this paperwork and I don't have that with me, I'm sorry.
Okay, you're waiting.
On employee salaries, are we still paying Pam?
No.
To help?
No, she is no longer being paid for anything at City Hall.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, we're going, we're going to go to the general fund now.
We're done, all we have is the next move to the next.
Is this it?
That's it, I'll leave now.
Okay.
There's the dog contract.
Okay. What do we got on that?
Well, I think we ran it last meeting, and the only thing we wanted to change was on section four, where for emergency medical attention for an animal that's being held for five days, to pay no more than thirty dollars. And basically what that medical attention is, is that she's had to put dogs down because they are so far down that we can't do anything with them. I didn't want to put in here to kill a dog because it sounds bad.
Utherization.
Yeah, even that sounds bad. But that's, that's why I said, you know, emergency medical attention. And she's got a vet in the halls that she takes them to, and she only has to pay thirty dollars to have it done.
In this late, in this new contract, what is the lease, um, length, the length of the lease?
Three, three years.
We almost went on for a year.
One year.
One year.
It's been one year.
Do you want to go back to the one year?
Yeah.
Okay, that wasn't said anything last time.
Why don't you go back to the new board?
That's what I was saying, the new board will come in.
And then I'll be at the year.
Okay, I'll change that. But other than that, it's the same contract as what it's been.
Sort of like hiring, if you leave it in July, they give the new board six months, six months, you know?
They don't need the thirty days, they figured it out.
It's still.
They need to figure out what's going on, they need to be down here. They figure it out real quick. Can't do this.
He don't know, he don't know where he at.
We're going to send it to the year?
Yeah, I changed it to a year on here.
We have a motion to send it to the year? Or we just have to do that?
Because all I have to do is just change the type, and on incident, we just have to sign it, if the, if the board accepts it.
But you're just going to change to one year, thirty dollars.
Thirty dollars maximum for the.
Another thing on that, where you call, call out at night, is that, explain that's up twenty-five dollars, that she picks a dog up at night, that the police calls about, what's, what's that?
If she has to be, that will pay her just the twenty-five dollars, which is what we normally pay her to pick up a dog.
Always pay.
Yeah, and she gets called out by the police in the middle of the night to come and get a dog, we pay her twenty-five dollars.
And we need to make sure that the officers now are going to stand behind her, or this is, all of this is known for our name.
Yeah, because I mean, she's got, she's got a situation today that we're having to deal with, and it's a bad situation. And, uh, so, but that's why I said the one time she got called out to contain a dog so that they could go in and take care of something. And if she's called out by the police, she should at least give the twenty-five dollars for that, and that was always asked for.
So if, if the, the water people has to call her, she gets twenty-five?
If, now, they only called you the one time, wasn't it?
I think the way it was set up was that the law enforcement officer had to.
The law enforcement officer had to be there.
Oh.
Okay.
Alright.
So otherwise, you know.
Okay, alright.
So then, so just that one change, back to one year, and then are we going to adopt this contract? Or we can just sign it the next time, or are we going to do that?
I'll make a motion to adopt the contract, the way she said it.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
W C.?
Yes.
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 Frank?
Yes.
So I'll go ahead and make that change and bring it in to the office, everybody. And then Jess needs a copy of it.
And, and she writes the first citation on a dog's.
She writes them a warning when she has to pick them up, after that, that's, uh, it's pretty much as a, as a card that says that I picked up your dog, and I'll put that, you know, it was a first offense on it, and if they paid it or not, it's, it's not a T, it's just one.
It's not a warning.
But if you have to go back to that same people again, should they not have to write a citation at that point?
And then create, it puts it in.
Okay, we, we need that, because we're picking them up two, three different times.
And like right now, she's got a situation where we have, that is an extreme cruelty to dogs. I mean, they're puppies and they're, they're actually dehydrating and they're all about dead. And the neighbors are complaining because of the smell.
Smells like something dead in that yard.
Yeah.
I drove by today, there's something smelling dead.
That's why I say, and she's got that, and so that's something that, that these people should be cited for cruelty to animals or whatever.
Which yard is it?
Uh, which one is it?
One sixteen North Street.
Yeah.
The, uh, the second one, they have just passed it, the second one has passed away now?
Okay, but I mean, this is things that she has to deal with sometimes, and, and she's picked up a dog from a person twice, and the second time they pick them up, they have, instead of paying fifty dollars, they got to pay a hundred dollars to get the dog back. And so, that's why.
So we're going to have to extract the dog, or what's going to happen?
Well, they, well, one person did pay it.
Yeah.
We did the hundred dollar shot, we've never discussed that.
That's, that's one of the works that I have.
Yeah.
Second time, it's a hundred.
Yeah, she had, so that's why, yeah, she had it in one of the ordinances. And so, but now after five days, if they don't pick them up, then it becomes pet haven, and then she tries to adopt them out, or if she has to euthanize them, then she does, to take care of it that way. But that then is at her expense. The only time that we deal with it is for the first five days. And I know some people say dog business, but I personally say it's public safety, because we're trying to get these dogs where they're not going to be on the street and hurt somebody.
I'm like Frankie, I don't know about the hundred.
But that was in an ordinance. I don't remember which ordinance it was that, but it was in an ordinance that was done several years ago.
That's something that's been, well, we discussed, they haven't put all that together, we lost the contract, we just talked about fifty dollars.
Yeah, but she charges them a hundred dollars, but she still only gets twenty-five. And the rest of it goes to the city. Instead of paying fifty, they have to pay a hundred for the second time. And she's only had that occasion once.
Yeah, and Bill's the one that found that ordinance for them.
That's, 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 that's not, that's not nothing we made up, that's been there.
It's been there for several years, so, I can't remember when the year it was, but, and it's been there. It was going on there before I even came on the board.
I'm in there, but I thought that's what we were doing when we modified and changed all that last year, when we entered into the agreement with Alderman. Matt Willis was supposed to redone the ordinance, and that's what we voted on.
He didn't do, redo the ordinance all, he only did the contract. Now, we need to look at the ordinance and change the ordinance, and we need to do that. But right now, it's, you know, he, he only did the contract, he didn't do anything with the ordinance. That's what she hangs on the door now to get picked up. Tell them that she has the dog and where they can come and get it.
And that's if I know who the owner is.
Yeah, if she knows who the owner is.
And if you don't know what.
I post them on social media.
Yeah.
And the City Hall's page shares it, I have multiple other pages that have shared it.
Now, these dogs that, for today, have you able to get a Parvo testing kit yet?
I found some, uh, Phil's has them for twenty bucks.
Uh-huh.
Uh, Darsburg has some that Phil sold me for thirty of these.
Okay, she's afraid these dogs that we're talking about, that are dying on us now, have Parvo. And if they have Parvo, we gotta, we have to put the whole.
And can't even take them to the dog pound if they have Parvo.
Some dogs are born with Parvo.
Yeah, but I mean, if it has Parvo, we gotta, we gotta put them all down. And then we need to really put out a public announcement, service announcement, saying that there has been an outbreak of Parvo, so please make sure your dogs are.
And you've got, and you've got to notate where at the city it's at, because your neighbors have got to know.
They've got to know.
That's in the air.
That's why I said we need a public service announcement to let them know, because Parvo is extremely contagious. So, and that's one thing that she's got to start working with too, checking to see if they've got the Parvo, so that we can, if we have to put them down, we got to put them all down. But right now, these dogs are so dehydrated that they're just, and they're puppies. He's left them out in the heat, and he's not giving them water or food or nothing, and they aren't just dying from dehydration.
Are they his personal dogs?
Yes, yeah, she's checked that out, they're his.
They're personal dogs.
You have a pantry next to the house.
Okay.
I've been through that before with another case.
They're personal dogs, and, and they let them do that, then they're neglecting the dogs.
Yes, sir.
They could be criminally charged.
That's why, you know, that, we were wanting Terry to pack it up, by saying, you know, giving them a ticket or whatever he has to do the charging for, cruelty to animals.
Think you need to put them out in that pantry for.
Well, I got a call the other day on a dog that was tied up in no water, and I went out there and said, "Yeah, I just put it out there. I just towed it out of the house and hooked it up, said it's a house dog, I keep it in the house. And I had to let it out of the wall there, he says, "I'm fixing to pack it right back in," but I got a call on it.
Yeah.
And I went, and the dog couldn't help it, and it had water, believe it or not, it had water to work by it. But people drove by and seen it, and they were concerned, and they had called me, so I went and checked it out.
Now, you can't put a dog on a chain no more, can you?
Yes, you can.
Yes, you can.
You can?
Yes, you can.
I thought they said not to put it, you said they have a pen, put them in a pen and out of the house.
You've still been chaining them if they're going to the restroom.
That's a vicious dog like that.
What?
Vicious dog.
A vicious dog.
A vicious dog has to be in a pen, but otherwise, you can put them on.
If I pack them out, put them on a leash that they can go to the restroom, then that's.
Then, yeah, then that way, the dog is not running around as a puppy.
I thought you had, you couldn't put them on a chain.
No, you can put them on a chain, if you're just letting them have, like, bad, like, adulation or something.
You can't put them on a chain.
You can't leave them on a chain.
No, you can't keep them out there all day. So, okay, so I'll get this, I'll get this to you tomorrow.
Alright, are we done with the budget, they were laying out?
I, I just wanted one question about the budget, is the next gen money still there? And is it still set aside for next gen?
There is money in capital outlay, but it's not set aside, it's not set aside for anything at this time, but there is also A R P. money that we still have set aside that has, that's not earmarked for anything at this time.
Are you going to move A R P. money over some for next gen?
I'm not moving the money anywhere for anything at this time, no.
Not unless we can say.
Right, so y'all tell me, nobody's talking about anywhere.
I thought, I thought we said that last meeting.
Yeah, it was put in there before, and then she put back.
I, wait, I, when I'm talking about for the mowers, is that what you're talking about?
Well, no, no, she's got the money, got somewhere else on the mowers, but the next gens were done a long time ago, and it took the next gen half the money out, so I paid the lawyer, where that money is gone.
That was your new software.
Even though, I think there's a deadline.
After that, we.
We have the money, we want, we want to do it, and I know that they didn't want to do it right now, but we still want to do that.
We have to do it within thirty-five years, yes, it would be, I mean, we do have to do it.
I just want to make sure there's still money to do there.
We don't have a choice, I mean, it's flex gen is getting harder and harder to operate with, if you have an issue with it, because there are less employees, the local government, that know flex gens and know next gen. So there's only specific people that work at local government that you can call for help. So, I mean, it is phasing out, and we will eventually have to, I mean, it's, we don't have a choice, it'll be obsolete.
We already paid some money on the next gen. We already paid some money on the next gen. We paid some money on it already, and then now it's been stopped, why don't we do it now, why are we gonna wait?
I believe I asked the board to table that for a while, back when I took over, because I was a relatively new employee, learning a new job, and was trying to train somebody to do that job, and then if you throw new software on top of both of us, that was a recipe to fail, so.
But now you're more comfortable with that, right?
Yes, it it, yes. I would say maybe not, cause with school and all of that, I would say probably not this year, but maybe next year, we can look at starting to install different models of it.
I still need to get my money from my computer.
Yep.
I just still don't have that. It's been turned over to you to paperwork, from Leonard, how much it was, seventeen hundred and sixty-seven dollars, I have to do in my office. I need a check for that where I can go get it.
Yes, sir.
Cause the P L number won't work. Another thing, I wanna ask the question, and this may not be right, but I'm learning.
Can I finish, can I finish, can I interrupt?
Well, can I finish my question?
I didn't get an invoice for the computer, I got a, I got a proposal.
I'll turn it over to your office, and I don't know what you're doing.
Terry, I got a proposal, not an invoice, I need an invoice for the computer before I can write it.
This is out of my mouth, how much it was with the like.
Yes, sir, but I have to have an invoice for the computer before I can write it.
Alright, or you get an invoice, or I get a invoice.
I have, no, I have to have an invoice to pay, you get a receipt when you pay for it. You have to have, I have to have.
I get it, and I need to get it, that's all I'm asking for.
From whoever there, from whoever there, I told you to find out. We had a con, oh, we had, we had a conversation, and I told you to talk to Leonard and ask him, do I need to make the check out directly to him or to the place he's getting the computer, and if it's the place that he's getting the computer.
And he gave you the proposal, how much it was.
But I need to know who to make the check out to, and I have to have an invoice.
Leonard, it's got his name on it.
You know, no, I'm never coming to.
Look into it, you can't tell Leonard for the computer.
Alright, who does him to pay to get the computer?
I need the new computer, I want a proposal, I have.
Where's the invoice at?
You get it from Leonard or whoever he's getting the computer from.
Leonard's always the computer off the internet.
Oh, off the internet?
He's gonna go pick it up in Jackson. Leonard's going to, Leonard told me, and I'm not trying to overtalk Terry, but Leonard's going to Jackson to pick it up. The printer, the, everything he's gotta have, but he's got to have a way to pay for it, or they won't give it to him.
Yes, sir, and I have a proposal, and we have agreed to pay for it based off that proposal, but I still must have an invoice to write the check.
Because she needs the name of the company that writes the check.
If it's to Leonard York, then Leonard needs to write me an invoice, not a proposal.
Can you order it, can you order it yourself, or our company down here, I don't care?
Order what, through what, what do you?
My new computer.
I, yes, I can order the computer, but if he's already got it.
Well, you can order it, and then we'll drop Leonard out, but we'll pay Leonard to hook it up.
No, sir, if he's already got it, I just need.
He ain't got it.
With private citizens going by.
He doesn't have it, he ain't picked it up.
No, Terry, if he's.
He's a tax on this stuff.
We have credit to pay Leonard.
Okay, the other question is, I'm gonna get over and uh, he tells. Did I not get vacation pay? I mean, I've got vacation pay, and she's helped it out. Did I not get holiday pay, since I was on vacation?
You should've had sixteen hours on your check.
I have two hours, and it's on my check stub right now, if you don't look at it.
You could've brought that in my office and we could've handled it in there.
Every time I'm coming there, you said you don't have time, you're in a meeting. I come there to update my computer, you said you were in a meeting.
I was in a meeting, I had an investigator here, can we put?
I'm just trying to get my check straightened out.
Are we done with the business? We can get the check straightened out on Monday in my office, there's no sense in talking about his paycheck in a board meeting.
This is two times it's been missed.
Let's get it straightened out.
Well, as I told y'all, down at the bottom of your time sheets, if you write what you're supposed to get paid for, you will get paid for it, same checks.
You don't have, Terry, you don't have any sick time?
I do.
Well, you, if you're off on doctor's care, then you have to be on sick time.
I didn't have, be on sick time, but I I wanted to burn this vacation up, cause it's gonna run out.
Well, you you know, you still got, you know, you still got to be off on sick time, if you've got a doctor, if you're off on sick time.
I have a doctor's excuse, I can burn it.
No, he can take, he can take his vacation time.
I can burn it. I'm trying to get rid of my vacation time, is what I was trying to do, and I about got rid of it, but I still have some sick time. And I need to use it. And I'll get a doctor's excuse if I have to do it.
Well, if it's late, you just go, if you're off on sick leave.
No, I mean, I do need a doctor's note, because it's the only vacation that he had, and it will, it will run out, he's in thirty, so.
He don't have time.
If he's off sick, he can take, he can take his annual.
He take, he take sick time.
No, he didn't, he hasn't turned in a doctor's note, he just told me he was on vacation.
I'm dead in the hospital.
My wife's already in the hospital.
Anyway, we'll get it.
Promise me Monday, and I'll take care of your check, get it to Leonard, and find out where to write the check, and I'll write the check.
Okay. Okay, and I'll take care of the sick time.
I'll do what I need to do, okay?
I have most of the jar.
Most of the jar. Y'all ain't gonna discuss the taxes?
We already.
We already did.
How much y'all raising?
On the water?
On all, on the property tax.
You raised one twenty-nine?
One point three-nine.
Three-nine or two-nine?
Ten cents, ten cents, they were. One point three-nine.
Thought it was two-nine.
No, three-nine.
One point two-nine was the base, and they voted to raise it to one point three-nine at the last meeting.
Yeah.
One point three-nine, don't hear it.
How much, how much, what was it, it said it's one point two-nine last year?
No, one point two-nine.
One eighty-seven.
It's one eighty-seven.
It was one point eight-seven last year.
And what's it gonna be this year?
One point three-nine.
One thirty-nine.
One thirty-nine.
Yes, sir.
Raised it ten cents?
From the certified tax rate, and we lowered it from one point eight-seven to one point three.
One eighty-seven.
Now, you can lower it, cause you're gonna get it on red pricing.
To one point three-nine, but it is ten cents higher than the certified tax rate.
Tony, that was the adjustment for the red pricing, so they had to lower it, to keep it from being sky high. And you you turned in three hundred thousand back off of last year's budget, still raised it ten, ten cents this year?
Um.
I mean, I saw, I listened to the figures, about two, three hundred thousand dollars you turned back off of this budget.
No, sir, we, that was the estimated revenue off of the tax rate for next year. And I have a motion to adjourn.
Second. Roll.
And, and thank you.